Special meeting of East Bay and Acme Township Boards. And we'll begin, if you'll join us, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice of God.
Okay, thank you. I think what we'll do, if it's fine with Doug White, the Acme Township Supervisor, will do a roll call with our clerk and then a roll call with the Acme Township Clerk. Go ahead, Sue.
Walters.
President.
Hook.
Here.
Lyle.
Here.
M. Cortade.
Here.
Sue Cortade, I'm here. Beth Friend.
Here.
And Bartlett is excused?
She is. She really, I will mention, she really wanted to be here, but she had another engagement that she could not get out of, another appointment early this morning, so. Dave Hoxey.
Here.
Amy Genema.
Here.
Paul Scott.
He's excused.
Dale Stevens.
Here.
Lisa Swanson, here. Doug White.
Here.
Aaron Wiley.
Here.
Okay, with that, we'll take a look at the agenda. This is, this is a joint meeting that is about the sewer project that we're working on jointly with Acme and East Bay Townships. I will just ask each board to see if they have a, if any board member has a conflict to declare. Does any board member in East Bay? How about on Acme? Okay, with that, we'll do an approval of the agenda and we'll just have both boards do a motion. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Ooh.
Is there support? Okay, moved by Lyle and supported by Walters. Any further discussion? They know that I forget names quite easily. No further discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed by no. Motion passes. Go ahead.
Is there any conflicts of interest? Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Genema, supported by Hoxey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Terrific. We have an agenda.
We've got an agenda.
Okay. Well, we'll start with public comment. If there's anybody here from the public who would like to stand up and speak to either board, please do so. I'm actually seeing pretty much everybody has particular reasons for being here. Oh, sure. Rob, Commissioner Henshaw, how are you tonight?
I'm well. Thank you, Supervisor Friend. Rob Henshaw, resident of East Bay Township. Most of my life, it has been my pleasure for the last few years to also serve as County Commissioner representing Acme. And I just want to commend everybody for the collaboration between the two townships. It's always been a wonderful alliance between East Bay and Acme on various projects, things like Grand Chevres Metro and of course, our sewer and water, protecting our clean lake streams and rivers in Grand Chevres County. And thank you all. And I just want you all to know, having been to East Bay Board meetings and Acme Board meetings, you're with a group of people on both sides of this room that really care about their communities. So, thank you very much for your collaboration tonight.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay, we'll pay Commissioner Henshaw for that later because we appreciate those kind comments. But we'll move forward with the business before the Township Board. As we mentioned, this is about the sewer project that Acme and East Bay Township are conducting jointly. This is a sewer line that carries the wastewater, all of Acme's and all of East Bay's, down into the wastewater treatment plant that we are contractually operate, are contractually participate in with the county, the city, and the five watered and sewer townships. This is a line that caused us some concern during COVID. And we authorized an investigation on behalf of, an analysis on behalf of, or having our engineers do that. And we've gone through the process of defining what we feel the issues are and going through funding. Tonight, you'll remember that we did have a joint meeting about a year ago on this project that kind of brought everybody up to speed on the issue and the analysis getting to that point. This meeting serves the purpose of bringing everybody up to date on where we are with the preliminary engineering, the anticipated timeframe, and also the funding. So this will add a component tonight on the funding. With us, we have from Wade Trim, which is the East Bay Township engineering firm that we use, Brian Sousa, who's the Vice President of Wade Trim, Joe Slonacki, project engineer, Garth Bogart, project engineer. We also have Gosling Zubek, which is Acme Township's engineering firm. We have Mark Hurley, who's the Director of Engineering, and Tim Corson, who's project engineer. I think I have all of those titles right. If not, I apologize. I will just kind of let you know an interesting fact. Brian, Joe, Garth, and Mark all went to Michigan Tech. So, the lot of, yeah, what's their, tell me their mascot again.
Huskies.
Huskies. A lot of huskies here. But Tim, I will let you know, Tim went to University of Detroit, Mercy. You are in good company because one of our other guests, Mark Nettleton, went to law school there. Mark Nettleton is the attorney. He'll be guiding us through the bond sale process, all of the legal documents. And he is with Micah Myers. You might remember Mark Nettleton from helping us do some work through the Board of Public Works, the DPW. And then we have Ben Zinski and Company here. Andy Campbell is here with Brittany Brower. Did I get your last name right, Brittany? Okay. And they are with Ben Zinski and Company, which is a municipal finance advisors. So what I'd like to do going through this is open it up to Wade Trim to bring us up to speed with the engineering, talk about what's going on, field any questions regarding the technical side of things. And then I'd like to turn it over to Mark and then Andy to go over the finance, some of the contractual relationships and the financing of it. And Doug and I have been working very hard at trying to piece this financial puzzle together in the most painless way possible. And of course, we do have, as all of you here know, we graciously have $2 million funded through the county and $1 million through the federal government. So that is extremely helpful. And we are still asking from the state. So, you know, feel free to call, feel free to call your representatives and senators. Anyway, with that, I will turn it over to Joe, correct? Joe Slonacki? You're up. Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for, you have before you the preliminary engineering report. And we're just going to do a brief overview of that and a little bit of what we've worked on prior to get up to speed. And if there's any technical questions, Garth's with me. He's done a lot of the design work in the computer that, so he's pretty in tune with that. And we've been having a lot of meetings with the stakeholders around here to kind of keep stuff moving. So, project overview, how we got to kind of where we are today. 2020, 2021 era, working on the US 31 project, the condition of that pipe was, had to be rehab lined and it was in kind of rough shape. And then there was a break in the force main from lift station one, runs to the wastewater treatment plant, that caused a lot of heartburn for the DPW and to get it fixed. And can't really see the picture the greatest. It's a little washed on there, but it is full of holes from some corrosion. So it's kind of falling apart. 2022, we did a preliminary engineering report, looked to see the basis, uses a basis for seeking additional funding, external sources of funding. And then in 2023, county ARPA application, clean water state revolving fund application, congressional appropriations. And later in 2023, we began with a design survey to begin the 2D layout and design process, which brings us to where we are with this report, which is the preliminary design engineering. So, working through the project, it kind of became apparent that there's two different phases for this project that make the most sense. Contract one, which runs from lift station number one to Garfield Road, roughly Garfield Road. There's, it's in that triangle there with the three roads that come together. There's going to be a switch somewhere around in there. But we haven't, haven't nailed that down precisely yet, but that's the likely area. And then contract two, which is from Garfield to the wastewater treatment plant. Distinction between the two is contract one is fairly open, runs along the cart trail, M dot railroad right of way. Not a whole lot of utilities in the way. It is a very good candidate for a directional drill, which is trenchless construction. And it has the least disturbance to the above ground utilities. Contract two runs through the city, it's pretty congested, lots of utilities, several force mains that run alongside, down different roads, down the different routes, storm sewer, water mains. It's quite busy through there. So, that one leads more to a construction method where we open cut and trench in the pipe. So, we, we believe that utilizing two different contractors who specialize in those types of constructions is probably in the best interest of everybody. Contract two, as we were designing it, there were always a couple of different routes we were looking at for taking the force main into the wastewater treatment plant. That was contract two A and contract two C that are labeled, the lines on the map there. Two C is primarily follows alongside the existing force main. We identified what we thought were several issues with that. We're running very close to the force main that's existing. We're concerned with digging close to that force main, given the condition it's in, potential for breaks, pressures from backfilling around it, vibrations from construction. And it runs along a route that has been highly developed since the original main was put in. There's condos and buildings and footprints of buildings that are very close, tight construction, tarp trail, and then you're in very close proximity to the railroad right of way. So, it seems to be quite problematic and difficult construction. Hannah Avenue is a route that we looked at, which is contract two A. Seemed like a very direct route, quite open. We had a lot of discussions with the city on a joint project in order to get the force main in. They've had a water main in their CIP for a while. A portion of the road's in pretty bad shape. Seemed like a good opportunity to take care of both at the same time if you're going to be digging up the road. But they weren't favorable to it, given their, their funding. It's in their CIP, but it wasn't something that they were going to jump on right away. And this project's coming a lot quicker than they were willing to, to move forward with. Also, they were having discussions on streetscape items, pedestrian crosswalks, bump outs, boulevards, tree boulevards, different things like that that they wanted to incorporate into the road. So, it turned into a much larger project than what this is intended to be. And so after those discussions, we were looking at the map, trying to figure out, you know, what would be the best route. And there's an alleyway that runs to the north of Hannah, which is two B. And that route is largely unpaved road, runs behind homes. It's existing right of way. And there were no utilities in it. So, the only crossings and conflicts that we had to work around were on the north south streets. And so, we, we investigated that one, talked to the city. And they were quite favorable with that route because it left more room for their future construction needs. So, that's kind of where that one came from. And as we worked through the design process and looking at estimates, cost of like putting everything back together, construction, that one actually came up to be the cheapest alternative. So, that's kind of a win-win. It's the most favorable route and it became the least expensive just because of putting everything back together, all the restoration efforts. There's any questions on any technical details right here with the report? Might be a good time.
Any questions? And any questions from anyone attending?
Yeah, I'm just, it's a curiosity question more than anything, but that original, original break, 2021 break.
Correct.
Where was it? Was that on the corner of Hastings and Hannah?
I believe Parsons is what we were, Parsons.
I don't remember exactly where it was.
It was east of Garfield. And it was along Parsons.
Yeah.
And I believe it was just a little bit the side of Hastings, if I remember, and south of the road.
So, Hastings and Parsons.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Roughly about there.
Yeah, generally the beginning of the contract two.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So, in the report, the recommendation was to utilize contract one with the directional drilling. And then our recommendation is to select the route of contract two B and to get into the wastewater treatment plant, utilizing that right of way. So, moving on to kind of next, and some of these we've started, hydraulic modeling of the main, which is the sizing of the main, and how it's going to work for current flows and future flows. So, we've, we've spoken with Acme Township and Gosling Zubek provided us with a recent report and data that they've used for their, their purposes. We've spoke with Garfield Township. They tie into this main at Woodmere Avenue. And Blair Township and their growth because they feed to Garfield Township. So, there's two parts to the modeling here. One is the first parts of all of contract one A and part of contract two. And that would be the Acme East Bay flows. And then we have to account for the Garfield Township force main at Woodmere. So, right now, we're looking at those current and future flows and what Eagle requires us to design the pipe to. And then we'll be selecting a force main size. Next up is Eagle permit. We've pulled the permit application, started gathering all the data to fill it out, working through what they need in order to get this permitted. And we want to, we want to permit the force main in one solid chunk. So, instead of a permit for contract one and a permit for contract two, we're submitting a permit for the entirety of the project to Eagle. And then after we submit to Eagle, we're going to be working towards the bid packet. There's two contracts that we're going to be working on. Contract one, which we talked about, lift station one to Garfield. Contract two, Garfield with the wastewater treatment plant. And then other permits that we need to get in order to go ahead with construction are M dot rail permit, the city of Traverse City right of way permit, and permit from the Grand Traverse County Road Commission for the crossing of Parsons. We've had discussions with all those entities, sent them preliminary plans with our layout, got feedback from them on, you know, offsets that they want to see, construction methods that they want to see. So, we're quite a ways along with that. But as we get closer to construction, we'll be submitting to them our final plans for their approval, or not approval, but review. And the schedule for going forward from here, we've begun final design this November. So, we took right, right off from this preliminary engineering report and began working towards final design. The Eagle permit stage is one that we've noticed has become quite lengthy. And it takes a while to get permits from them recently. So, we jumped right ahead with this phase two and began some of the final design of phase three. That was due to us coming in a little bit under budget for phase two and utilizing what was remaining in order to get ahead so that way we can get a permit in sooner and hope, and get a permit by bidding time. So, we want to submit that early December. We're on track to do so. Project permitting, which would be the Grand Traverse County Road Commission and the right of way permits that we need, looking into February for those final plans for their, their blessing. And then a bid opening early March is a target. And then construction, notice to proceed, which is where we've had discussions with contractor and worked out all the contract language, bonds. That would be main. So, once that starts, they can begin construction, ordering parts, sending in their shop drawings, submittals, all that with construction in 2025. So, we anticipate two construction seasons for a project of this size. So, looking into a December 2025 shutdown, depending on weather, you know, that's a play it by ear kind of date. See how the weather's going, what they can get done and accomplish. And a restart in 2026, and substantial completion in November, and then project closeout. There's a little bit of, little bit of wiggle room in this schedule for moving things around, like the early March bid opening with May 2025 notice to proceed. There's some room in there for any little hiccups that may come up. And with that, that's where we're at right now with the design.
Okay. One thing I just want to mention to all the board members, and I think Joe hit on, hit on this, but I just want to express appreciation to Wade Trim in the collaboration that they're doing with other partners who could be affected. So, you mentioned the city. It's also DTE, other utilities, Blair, Garfield Township, all of, all of those.
Tarp trail.
Yep. And he may have a connection with the road commission to let them know, that sort of thing. So, a lot of times when we go to do a major project like this, right, or any municipality does, one of the comments we get is like, did they not work with another entity that was doing a similar project? Or, for example, DTE was doing work along Parsons this year. It's unfortunate that we didn't have notification from, from DTE until just months before they undertook that project. And on top of that, it wouldn't have lined up with our construction either anyway. But just to let you know, to the greatest extent possible, we work with those so that we can gain any efficiencies and minimize any impact to the surrounding community.
Yeah, we've had discussions with the other townships engineers, Gosling Zubek, Gordy Frazier with Garfield Township. They're all aware of what we're doing and the project have, they've had a quick look at the preliminary plans. And they're working with us on sending their data to make sure that when we model this and size it and put it into service, that it's going to work for everybody.
Given the scope too of what we've been doing over the past couple of years and preparing for this, the Garfield and the Blair impact was, I would say relatively recent compared to the total, you know, project analysis. And so, we're also taking a look at that to see, obviously you are from an engineering standpoint. We'll be also taking a look at that from a financial standpoint as well. Right now, I don't have that factored in because I'm not sure that there will be any funds that way, one way or the other. But we'll definitely be taking a look at what that impact should be, if any. So, and I do want to mention, as far as the schedule is concerned, because I mentioned the $2 million from the county and the $1 million from the feds, the $2 million, the clock ticking on the county, and you'll see the paperwork in here where they were inquiring because, right, that's one of their largest allocations from ARPA. So, they're wondering like, okay, you haven't put in for the funding, so what's going on? But there's, as you can see, there's a tremendous amount of work leading up to this project. And, but then a tremendous amount will be spent in a short period of time. So, that $2 million will absolutely be exhausted by their 2026 deadline. We will exhaust that in the first phase of construction in 2025. So, and likely putting in for reimbursement for that in late 2025. And then for the $1 million federal allocation, we have until 2030. Obviously, we won't take nearly that long, but we have quite an extended period of time for the federal government. That'll also be utilized within the first year though. Yep.
Dale has a question.
Yep.
Yeah, now that we're, because we're in the engineering update presentation section, I think this is the time to ask this question. But the existing force main, residual value of that, I remember in previous discussions, we touched on, if I remember right, recognizing that existing force main wasn't lined, but it could be lined, could be relined, and could, if I remember right, serve as a backup.
Correct.
For future development. Where does that existing main, because there was one break, and that break was right at a heavy travel intersection. So, is there residual value to the existing forced main?
As far as a redundancy, yes. We've talked about, when this new line's put into service, you have the ability to go in, clean out the old main, jet it, flush it, drain it, put in valves, clean outs, and, and reline that main with what would be like a CIPP, which is a cast in place pipe. So, you, you can look at the integrity of that main once it's out of service and empty and it doesn't need to be flowing. There's some provisions that we've looked at and have incorporated into the plans where crossovers, areas where you're close to the existing main. So, at some key intersections or areas where it's close, you can put in Ts and valves and Ys and divert flow once that main has been rehabbed, if there's an issue or maintenance needed on the, on the main that we're designing right now. So, that way it would give the operators, the DPW, opportunity to shut down portions of the main, move the flow over, and do work on it in a manner that doesn't affect the residents.
Okay. So, given that, can I continue?
Mm-hmm.
Given that, that whole concept of that potential is not part of what we're talking about right now.
The relining of the.
Right.
No.
Okay. So, the questions I have, because we're going to be, you know, I mean, you're going to be, you're going to be directionally drilling a lot of it. But then you've got that old, the old easement section that goes through the city under contract two that's currently in use. Is this the time to talk about that and also get input as to what it could be used for? Should we be doing that economies of scale while we're doing it at the same time? Economies of scale that would be gained from that? And who's going to pay for it? Because there's three entities that would have an interest in that, I think, one being DPW, as they're all saying, one being East Bay, one Acme. Where are we on that? And I guess, you know, I just would hate to have us go through this and then in 2026 go, wow, we should have thought about that when we didn't.
Yeah. I'll, I'll let, I'll let you field it if you like. I have some thoughts as we've gone through this as well.
Yeah. Relining of an existing main is a different process than placing a new main. So, it, and in order to do so on the existing main, you would, you have to clean it and drain it and take it out of service. So, as far as running it simultaneously with this project, that would be, that would be quite difficult. You've done some force main relining, Brian?
Yes. So, we did a very similar project for.
Come up here. You'll make Trent much happier.
I'd be able to talk tonight. Thank you. We did a very similar project for East Bay.
And Acme.
And Acme, that's right.
Twenty and twenty.
Seven, eight years ago, from Acme, or East Bay Lift Station two, the force main that goes all the way to one. So, it follows US 31 from basically four mile Indian Trail. Relined that, that existing force main. So, we're very familiar with the process. But I think what Joe's trying to say is we couldn't even touch that existing main and start that relining until the new one is in and operating and running, so we can take the old one out of service. And the process of relining is a totally different contractor needed for that work. So, an economy of scale between those two projects really wouldn't happen because they're two different services and approaches and contractor types.
And to give you an idea of the scale financially, this is, we're looking at about construction contracts, about $11 million. The CIPP that we did in 2020 on 31, that was $1.2 million joint project that we did.
That was the relining?
Mm-hmm. That was the relining.
Okay. Now, are there, so during this process of building this, of building the new line, we're not really changing anything in terms of load to the existing line, correct?
No. This, this line runs from East Bay Lift Station number one all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. And is it Acme's Lift Station one? T's in right about where East Bay's Lift Station one is.
Okay.
So, the load that's coming is going to be the same down the new line.
Okay.
Currently.
Okay. And then.
Future flows to consider, like, to think about as far as like the permitting of it goes. But currently, it'll, it'll operate very similar.
Okay. And then I just want to make sure we're crossing every T and dotting every I. Are there, are there any other things that should be, we should be talking about right now because we're doing this? And it could be Acme issues, could be East Bay issues, anything. Because I'm asking all the engineers.
We've been in discussion with Gosling of how it's going to operate and working together to make sure that way when we model this, it's going to function properly.
Okay.
One thing that we've been discussing internally is, is looking at future maintenance or DPW concerns with cleanout placement. And how much line can you clean at a time? So, let's space the cleanouts so that way the people who go in and clean this in the future can do it in a manner that they don't have to do additional maintenance to it. Putting valves and isolation valves. Putting valves, and isolation valves in strategic locations to make that, that easier. So, we're, we're looking forward to future maintenance with this and trying to accommodate those that do that.
Okay.
That's one part, Dale, that I've heard them talk about a lot, which is kind of that, you know, how they can route and reroute if needed to be. And so, the, again, with the valves and the placements, they've done a lot of forward thinking with that.
That's good. And Gosling's in line with that thinking also?
Yeah.
Come on up, Mark.
Yeah, we'll, we asked Joe for, I would say, how many scenarios do you think we asked for? Six or eight different scenarios of how, when East Bay Number One is operating, how Acme Number One operates, and when One's on, One's off, when they're working together, how, how that, they come up with sizing the main, how the velocities work, and how that'll affect our future, East Bay's future, and, and how they co-mingle as they grow together in the future. So, we'll, we'll, we'll second guess and boss around Joe when he sends us all that information.
These guys work really well together, too, I've noticed. They like to rib each other, too. So, Gosling has said, you know, they would be happy to come be East Bay's engineer, and Wade Trim has told Acme they'd be happy to come be Acme's engineer. And we, Doug and I, just say, you should just be like Gosling, Trim. You could just be One, and then-
Well, they probably all room together.
Any other, anything else from the engineers or board members before we get into the financial part? Sure. Matt Cook, I saw him, and then we'll go to Matt Cortade.
Yeah, so, kind of talking about this future proofing with the, with the redundancy, going back on relining the old forced main. This may not be possible, I don't know if this is y'all's world, but at least for the Section Two, this is going to have to be open trench. Is it possible to put two redundant lines in there at the same time? I know the increase in the cost of material, I don't know what size lines these are.
Yeah, we did. That, it might be an option. That would be a cost.
Would it, would it be a, would it be a lesser cost to do that today versus relining that, the opposite section?
It would be cheaper to lay two next to each other than to reline the same length of pipe-
Right.
-under old pipe. But one of the reasons we were talking about that, that we really brought it up initially, is because at Woodmere is where Garfield comes in. And I said, man, wouldn't it be nice if everybody had their own line, and Garfield didn't have to worry about us, and we didn't have to worry about them, and when we go and do a project, then I'll have to, you know, it's, it's fine working together, but everybody had their own line. And I says, if we open cut that, what if we put two lines in, and Garfield and Blair cover the cost of the second, you know, we cost share, and then everybody's on their, their own line. But the, the opposite is true, is we could, and we've done this before, put in two forced mains, one for now, one that's bigger for later, right, if we know a bigger development's coming in 10, 15 years, whatever it is. So, there is an opportunity to do that, because we don't need the separation between those two pipes like we would if it was water main and sanitary sewer. They have to be tend to be apart at least. So, there is opportunity to do that. Now, because we're following a different route in that side of the project, so when we get to Garfield, we're saying, I can deviate from where that forced main goes now, we'd have to incorporate some additional thought process on getting underneath the, the intersection at, at Garfield, so that that's all taken care of. But, I mean, it's, it's a great question, and we've actually talked about it internally. But I, I don't think, I think you'll get more bang for your buck if you were to do it both and have Garfield populate that line and use, use it for their own uses, their own purposes. The thing we run into, and I'm probably getting too deep in the weeds here, but when we've got several different pump systems going to the same, same line, they, all those pump systems have to work together, like Mark mentioned. When, when Acme's running and East Bay has to turn on, we got to make sure that all the, all that waste can go through that pipe. In pump situations, if one pump's not weak or strong enough, and other one's really strong, it'll overpower the other one, and this one runs, but it's not pumping anything, because this pump is overpowering everything. So, it becomes a somewhat of a delicate balance, where if you upgrade one station, you really got to look at how it affects the others. So, the less we can have of that, so in other words, if we removed Garfield, or it was the ability to remove Garfield, that's, that's one or two stations we've got off of that line that we don't have to worry about. If somebody upgrades their station, now we're looking at everybody else's, you see what I'm saying? I don't know if I really answered your question on that.
No, I mean, you did. So, it's possible. It's possible to, to throw in a redundant forced main in with this new project. I guess I'm just wondering, from a cost standpoint, you know, if it's been evaluated in, in terms of order of magnitude, what that additional cost might be, because, you know, the, the work's already been done, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of fixed costs associated with the work that wouldn't change, sure, based on being there. So, you do that versus going in with one now, and if we're going with this route to B, logistically, you're a lot further from the existing. So, if we're talking about having Ts and tie-ins to potentially use that other location, now we're having to go and pick up a bigger project to run lines-
Right.
-in addition to the relining cost.
Yeah, so, cost-wise, I mean, we're really just looking at the cost of material to put in another pipe. I mean, your excavation's going to be a little bit bigger, because your trench is going to need to be a little bit lighter, but not, you know, not cost-rehibitive situation.
And that would, I mean, from, what's the, what's the expected life, life expectancy of this new pipe?
Fifty, 75, 100 years. I mean, we're going to be using plastics. What you have in now is buck, cement line buck liner, which is very susceptible to the, the problems that wastewater causes.
Yeah.
In some of that photo at the beginning, you didn't get to see it, but the top is all rusted out. So, when, when wastewater goes anaerobic at turn, it creates sulfuric acid, which then eats metal. So, pipe, pipe since the 70s has come a long way, and this plastic pipe will last you a long time.
Yeah, but I mean-
I think, I think, I think you'll need a new pipe, because you grew so much sooner than you would need a new pipe, because it went bad.
Right. Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking, from a, from a future proofing standpoint, if, you know, if we were to invest the money potentially, it sounds like it'd be a high likelihood in the future to take that old, under one scenario at least, take the, the existing forced main and reline and rehab it for redundancy or other use. Would we get that 50 to 75 years worth of life cycle out of a relined pipe?
You, you would. So, when you do cure and place pipe liner, it's a fiberglass liner that actually becomes a structural pipe on the inside of the old one. So, you can actually bust the old one away, and you've got a good, a good pipe on that, that you put on the inside. So, and that's very resistant to the problems of-
I don't think you lose, yeah, I don't think you lose very much of that flow either. I remember being surprised.
I mean, by, by permit, by the state requirements, we have to assume a certain roughness coefficient of the pipe, whether it's super smooth or whether it's rough concrete. They require us to use a certain roughness coefficient. But in reality, when you line a pipe like that, you change the di, you shrink the diameter a little bit, but that liner is so smooth that actually it can increase, decrease the head pressure, increase your volume of flow.
All right. One other question, real quick. Did, in evaluating these three different routes, I think you gave kind of the pros and cons to each of them that you all evaluated. Did you evaluate kind of based on what you were talking about with where you put clean out and, and, you know, trying to accommodate serviceability? Did, did any of these have any concerns around serviceability, one being superior to the other, based on their route?
Not, not any one any worse than the other.
Okay.
The, the one that would be the most difficult to service from access standpoint is the route that follows the existing main. It would be, on the hard trail, it's narrow, and not good access, so it's one way in, one way out kind of situation. The others were following a road right away that cars drive down all the time.
Okay. And last question, because I don't know what it looks like. This pipe stops, you know, at least on the drawing here, it shows, you know, right in kind of the middle of the park, somewhere it's going to tie into that-
Yeah, that's shown right to the property line of the Witch Rock.
Okay. Has that been defined? Do we know what that, sort of that delineation and scope looks like? I mean, I imagine at some point, we get a pipe to a location of a plant. The plant's got to do something with the connection, right? Are we going to be responsible for all of that?
It would take it right into the headworks. So, we were, Garth and I were just actually down there today.
Okay.
The wastewater treatment plant is doing an upgrade to their headworks building, where they're going to be redoing that building completely, and the piping going into it is going to be different. So, we're, we're looking at the existing drawings of where those pipes run through that property, and I don't know if we'll get there first, or if they'll get the headworks building done first. Today, it sounded like this project could get there first, so then, we just select the best route right through there, right to it, and put a Y in and tie in.
Okay.
But yeah, there's some, we're, we're having discussions with the wastewater treatment plant right now about what that project looks like, and their operators and the engineer that the city selected to do that design. So, they've been sharing drawings with us.
Any other questions? No, yeah, from Matt. No, you're good. Okay. Matt?
After that discussion, mine's a little simpler, I think. I mentioned before that you, we talked about sizing of the pipe, and I see it kind of mentions that you haven't really determined that, even though in here it says 18 inches.
Oh, the 18 inches was a number we selected for estimating purposes. So-
Okay.
Not wanting to select a pipe diameter that's too small for an estimate, for estimating. The larger the pipe, generally, the cost of installation goes up, especially with directional drilling and those methods. But the cost of the pipe just goes up, because there's more material. So, we upsized it from a 14 to an 18 to account for any hydraulic modeling that we do, that would say that the pipe needs to be upsized. We, we've begun the hydraulic modeling, and currently, what we're looking at and projecting into the future is, the 14-inch pipe will serve capacity into the future. So, likely, you'll see something bid that's smaller than what's in the estimate.
Wow, because I, I was the other way around. I, I see it as that, we don't want to overbuild it, but we don't want to underbuild it either. And that, by my numbers, when you go from a 14 to an 18, it's like about a 60% increase in size, and if you go to a 20, it's almost 100% increase.
Yeah, it's, it's a big difference.
So, and, you know, the difference between 18 and 20, while you're doing it, can't be too much more.
Yeah, so, not to get too technical, but when-
Aborum.
Aborum, yeah. So, generally, you want, you want the flow of the pipe to be at about two feet per second, and that keeps solid suspended in the pipe and moving down the line to the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
Right now, Acme, or East Bay One, is pumping at about a 1.7 feet per second. They ramp it up every now and again to flush through, but to meet your current needs, right now, that line's running at about 1.7 feet per second. Looking at the numbers going into the future with projected growth and a peaking factor of two, so kind of double it, it's going to run at four feet per second. The limit for what you want out of one of those mains is 10 feet per second. So, there's a lot of capacity left, and from, but, what we do is a 20-year projection. That's what Eagle requires for the permit. So, there's capacity there.
Well, the growth's coming, and we all know that, and it's, it's hard to predict.
Yeah.
But, you know, 50 years ago, when the first line was put in, I don't think they could ever imagine what happened since then. And I don't think we can imagine what's going to happen 75 years from now.
Yeah.
And if that's what we're talking, we, we want to make sure we, make sure that the sizing is really correct.
Yeah, the, the problem would be, is if you oversize it now, you're not going to be pumping fast enough to keep it clean.
Yeah, well, that was my next question, is, is what the negatives would be to do it.
You have to balance it, yeah, and they won't permit it also. So, you got to balance it for what you need now versus what's projected into the future. And from gallons per minute, just to kind of, velocity doesn't mean much. But, right now, you're 1,500 gallons per minute running through that line. If you can ramp up to around 10, that's 6,000 gallons per minute. So, it's, it's a pretty big difference.
Just where I said, I think it should be as big as it possibly can be within the parameters that are there.
Yes, yep.
Any other questions? Yep, Glenn?
You had a most familiar going to ask, but the current line that runs from Pump Station One down to the city is 14-inch?
Correct.
And how much more capacity is or in that if you run it regulated feet per second?
Uh-
The maximum?
Huh?
The maximum?
Yeah.
It was 6,000 gallons per minute, and right now, it's running at about 1,500, if you-
Oh, well, the reason I was asking, I just was concerned of what the size was. If we're upgrading to a bigger size, did the other line not be able to handle the flow down the future?
Oh, if you want-
Because you can't, if you got to take one line down, you can't just try to pump more into the pipe than is capable of handling if it's the old pipe and the new pipe is bigger, if you get what I'm saying?
Yes.
That was my-
Yeah, and, you know, the, the crossovers or redundancy that we talked about, those would be not a normal situation. Those would be emergency situations where, or short-lived situations. There's not really a permissible condition for that kind of operation, but it's something that's good to have. So, that, that's one of those, it's not permitted to run that way, but in the event that you need to do maintenance, it will.
Thank you.
Other questions? Amy?
Yeah, it's not technical at all. It's more construction. I saw your flow. Are you running the contracts, and construction's going to occur for the two different contracts at the same time? Or is it December, or when you're talking about the, we're going to stop and start again, one Phase One and one Phase Two?
Uh, they could run concurrent, or they could run separate.
So, it's going to be up to the-
The individual contract.
The individual, I'm just thinking money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm like, okay, so are we looking at the basing? So, that's all I was-
Money question, I guess.
Pay for.
Yeah.
The, ideally, if you got two good contractors, you could start going at the same time and finish in one year. But, so, and that would be two different crews and two, yep, two different contracts going.
As difficult as it's been with construction projects recently, what we have right now is the 2025 and then the 2026, to make sure that we're covered and safe. Could we do it? Financially, yes, we can. We're, you'll, you'll hear we're in good shape timing-wise to bond for 2025. We'll get into that later. I'm not thinking that we need to bond in 2025. We probably will do that in 2026. But we'll see how those contracts come together. Other questions, and then we'll move on with, to the legal? And did any of, I mean, you guys did speak through this, but anything else from Garth, Tim, Brian, or Mark?
Good.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Joe. Really appreciate how much you guys have all been working on this. Okay, with that, we'll move on, introduce, we kind of already did, Mark Nettleton. And Mark is with Micah Myers. As I mentioned, he has worked with us with the DPW previously. And when talking with Andy Campbell, and I said, you know, give us kind of your top three councils that you use for, through the bonding process. And he, he named off one or two, and he said, but the best is, and I said, oh, we've already used him, so that works well. How are you, how are you today, Mark?
I'm doing great. I'm the only person wearing a tie.
Sorry.
I've got a senior partner at a firm, or he's now retired, and he's like, this is our calling card, it's our business card, so.
You know, if you go, if you go to Garfield Township, they wear ties all the time. I did want to mention to the board members that you do have in the packet the sewer system usage agreement, and Mark has reviewed that. That's that standing agreement between Acme and East Bay Township that kind of outlines our contractual relationship.
Sure, yeah. So, thank you very much for having me up here. Happy to be here, happy to assist with the project. So, I guess that there are two buckets of legal questions, okay? The one that's pretty straightforward and easy is the financing legal bucket, and that- The one that's pretty straightforward and easy is the financing legal bucket and that process, and I'll talk about that in a second. But the other one is about, okay, well, how do the two townships who partnered together under that 2013 agreement, how do we make that work for the financing, right? And so the good news is, and with respect to that bucket, is you have the general outline of how you're going to deal with and accomplish and work together on a necessary capital improvement. And that's included in Section 5 of your existing agreement. And it basically says that you're going to share in those costs based on your proportionate flow that's, that's determined there. But the specifics, when you've got a project, I think really need to be spelled out in another side agreement. And so that's a little bit of the downside, is that there is some legal work to do, and both townships are going to have to agree that, okay, say we're talking about, and this has been the assumption so far in terms of what I've discussed with Beth and with Andy, is that let's just say, East Bay is going to issue bonds to pay for this project. And we're going to put that in, in this side agreement, okay? And then we're going to memorialize that, okay, the share, proportionate share of the debt service to repay the bonds issued by East Bay is going to be in accordance with what Section 5 says, and that determination in terms of proportionality. And we have to determine how long the bonds are going to be outstanding. So I think that that's something that we'll have to do in the near term, is to come up with that agreement and make sure that both parties are comfortable with that. And then when that's in place, or we're comfortable that we're on the right path there, then we can start that financing process, that second bucket, the first bucket I mentioned. And that is that, you know, this is a good project for capital improvement bonds. Capital improvement bonds are authorized under the Revised Municipal Finance Act. And basically, capital improvement bonds may be issued by a township to finance a project like this. And then you can utilize rates and charges or this financing agreement that I'm talking about as the means for repayment of those bonds, debt service on those bonds. Not to keep going back and forth, the other thing we want to specify in that financing agreement is kind of the, the party's understanding of where all the money's coming from, right? Your county ARPA dollars, your federal allocation, the contributions from each of the townships in terms of cash. We'll put that in there as well, so that everybody's on the same page as to, you know, how we're paying for this project. With Act 34, capital improvement bonds, that process to issue those bonds is, in this case, we'll assume it's East Bay. East Bay would adopt a resolution of intent that I would prepare. We'd describe the project. We'd set forth generally the expectations for how long the bonds are going to be outstanding. And we authorize a notice of intent to be published in the newspaper. Once that notice of intent is published in the newspaper, that starts a 45-day right-of-referendum period in that township. And that 45-day right-of-referendum period is an opportunity for the electors in that township to circulate petitions on the question of whether or not the township should be able to issue those bonds without voter approval. So if petitions are circulated within that 45 days, and they're sufficient, sufficiency is determined by, with reference to 10% of the registered electors in that township. So if petitions meeting that threshold are filed, then the township wouldn't be able to issue those bonds unless and until the bonds were authorized by the voters at a general or special election, okay? So you'd have to have a vote on it. If insufficient petitions or no petitions are filed, township can go ahead and issue those bonds, okay? Once we clear that 45-day right-of-referendum period, then basically we go through the process when we've got bids for our project. When our costs are finalized, then we'll go out, and this is where Andy is very much involved, Ben Zinsky and Company is very much involved in terms of assisting in arranging for the sale. I think we're contemplating here a competitive open market sale. So we get bids from interested banks or financial institutions, underwriters for the purchase of the bonds. We take the lowest interest cost, and then we can proceed to closing on those bonds. Stole some of your thunder, sorry. So that's a quick overview of kind of the two areas of legal work with respect to a project like this. And, you know, other than kind of identify, reviewing your existing agreement, reviewing your contract with the city of Traverse City and the other participating townships, I don't think that that contract poses an impediment or really has any significance from what I saw in terms of this proposed project. So it really is your 2013 agreement between the two townships that we would work with. But other than kind of looking through that and kind of coming to this conclusion and presentation today, haven't started working on any sort of an agreement yet, so background thinking about that and what it would look like, but nothing on paper yet.
Yep, very good. Amy?
So East Bay is going to, in theory, go for the bonds. We would have a contract with you to pay whatever portion it is. So when East Bay does the 45, or when you do the 45-day hearing, can Acme's residents oppose, or is it only East Bay's?
For, if East Bay is issuing the bonds, it's only directed to East Bay voters, and only East, both, East Bay voters would have the say, if you will.
Okay, that's fine.
If the petition's-
That was my question too, to me, is how is that figured? Are both townships, I mean, we're 10,712. You guys are how many? I mean, I guess it's irrelevant if it's just going to be 10% of that.
Right, just be 10%.
Not that we'd expect that, but just so that we had an idea of what that was.
And you recall, we, we talked about this project with Utility Financial Services with Dawn Lund. And she looked at, you know, the possibility, and Doug has looked at this with Gosling and, and Acme's finances of, do we need to bond? This project is pretty significant, pretty hefty. And East Bay Township is in a position where we, we wouldn't need to bond now, but as Dawn mentions, we have some other projects that would become shortly down the line where we would need to bond. And then what happens, we're better off bonding now and sharing these costs with Acme Township. It's benefit to us and to them, rather than to just take on that bond all on our own later for projects. So we're looking at, at bonding through East Bay, but sharing the costs together. Any questions for Mark? Any other questions for Mark? Mandy?
For that part of the line, which may or may not have other municipalities in at a later date, how does that work because they're not part of our agreement?
Great question on the fly. I can't, I, I really can't. I mean, one thing that comes to mind is that you might say, okay, we need to have kind of a cash payment of some sort from those other municipalities. And then what, you know, the issue there is, what, what can you do with it? So when you issue bonds, they're typically issued with a period of time. So if it's a 20-year bond issue, you typically have a period where you cannot call the bonds for redemption prior to a certain date. It's kind of referred to as call protection. So if you get a chunk of cash from, say, another, from Blair or something like that, you may not be able to use it to pay down that outstanding debt for a period of time. So it's, it's worth some thought. And I'll need more information about what the scope is there.
And that's one of the reasons, like, when we were initially talking with Andy and, and then finding out, like, how the Wade trim was breaking up this project, that potentially, if they do, in fact, do it in 2025 and 2026, being able to handle everything in 2025 with cash, and even with potentially East Bay floating some of that cash. So let's say we had 5 million in cash to use. And let's say next year, 2025, we need 6 million. While we could, East Bay could float the 1 million either out of the sewer fund or even the water fund and pay back into that. But what that does is that gets us closer to bonding to when the actual project is, to when we know exactly how much we need, if there'll be any cash payments from anybody else. The closer we can bond to when we need those funds, the more, the less chance we have of taking out too much or too little. And there's ramifications for both of those, and we don't want to do that. So we'll get as close as we can in timing and get as accurate for that amount, so we can not leave money on the table and also not cost us anymore.
And I think, just because I know it's in the forefront of many communities' minds with that ARPA deadline, right? ARPA funds have been obligated, but they need to be expended by that December 31, 2026. So that's something we'll need to keep in front of mind as well with this type of project.
Yep, absolutely. Other questions for Mark?
I don't know if it's Mark or the finance, so I might keep my mouth shut right now.
Okay, they'll both be, Mark isn't going far.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, with that, Andy, this is Andy Campbell with Ben Zinsky and Company, and he brings with him, as I mentioned, Brittany. And we, Tracy Bartlett, our treasurer, and I were able to sit down and have a discussion with them and kind of put together, we wanted to, you know, have this meeting to bring you guys up to speed, not only on the engineering, but start to bring in the financing piece of it.
Nice to meet everybody. So what we are is, we are an independent financial advisor. So we are, we're registered with the SEC. We are required by law to give you independent advice. So we're not tied to any bank, broker, government, agency, or anything. So we are required to give you financial options available of like where to get the funding if you are going to go out to, to bond. And then we talk through what the best financial options are, and we're required to get you the best terms. In this type of scenario, based on the construction timing and the project, it is very straightforward from our opinion. Your best option is, as Mark said, a competitive sale, open market, as commonly called, where anybody can bid on the bonds, and you take, you're obligated to take the lowest true interest cost, so the lowest cost of borrowing. It is an easier process than trying to go through a government agency. A government agency, just to give you a prepper of that, you would not be able to start for at least a couple of years. So we ruled those out pretty quickly, and we didn't qualify for SRF and the funding. So it's pretty straightforward, as I talked about, we need to go competitive sale, and you can get that done when you want to. It's generally speaking, a four-month lead time. So if you said, we need money in the bank, as soon as possible, we can get you money in the bank, assuming that we get a bid, in four months. From that time, there's a couple of things I want to talk about on the financing side. So first off, I do want to kind of back up to the project amount. There's an estimate of $11 million. We commonly call it the four points of finance, construction, engineering, contingency, and bond costs. Is the 11 million include all four points, or is that just construction?
I'll, I'll have Joe handle that, but that is just construction, correct?
Yep, construction and engineer.
And, and contingency?
Contingency.
And contingency, okay. So we'll talk about the bond costs, because obviously there are costs to issue debt, so we'll talk about that. So the 11 million includes three points. We'll talk about the fourth point here. The other thing that I do want to talk about is the bond timing. So Beth has talked about this, and she's correct in saying that you do not need to rush out and get into debt right now. I do want to kind of talk about the process of signing the contractor's bid, both of the contractor's bids and the bond timing, because I think it's important to kind of know what the risks are here. So on the current timeline, going off of memory here, the bid timeframe was February to March of 2025. Theoretically, you'd sign contracts in like April or May, and then you'd start construction in May of 2025. When we talk about issuing debt, if, just very typically, there's always caveats, and we'll talk about why you may, may do a caveat here. Typically, what we would do is we'd say, okay, don't rush out and get into debt right now. We wait until the, the construction bids are known. Is it 11 million you need? Is it 11.5? Is it 10.5? That will be known in March of '25. Then we, we have all the documents and all the legal stuff prepared before then on kind of estimates. You put together the final bond, the final bond documents in April. You sell the bonds and close the bonds before you start construction. That would be a very typical timeline. The bank question becomes risk, essentially. So a lot of communities do not have a lot of cash, so they are required to really do that, to make sure that you can sign the contractor's bid, knowing that you have the money to pay the contractor. So the risk that you have in delaying the bonds past the start of construction is that you are signing a contract to pay the contractor, in this case, let's say $11 million. If we don't sell the bonds in '25, which I'm perfectly fine with, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here, we would need to have a backup plan to basically say like, do we have cash? Can we delay? Like, it, it's perfectly fine to do so, I think, based on the financials of the townships that we, we've seen Acme's audits, and we've obviously worked with East Bay. But I would just want everybody to be aware that, like, if we have 2 million ARPA, 1 million from the feds, 1 million contribution from each township, so the plan is 5 million, but you would be signing a contract to pay 11 million in April of 2025. So we would say, okay, if, if we want to do the bonds in '26, perfectly fine, we can kind of wait, and it sounds like that might be preferred because you could, you could essentially have one full construction season done. You could see if, if you need the full contingency or not. If something came up in the construction where you might need a little bit more money because you ran into a construction problem, that could be all very good, that you can kind of wait and issue the bonds in '26. But both townships would have to be okay with the risk that you're signing a contract for 11 million and you're, you would need to issue the bonds later, so.
Joe, is that two contracts?
Yeah.
Okay, so they could be distinctly separate?
Yeah.
Even separated by time as well?
Right.
Okay. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, so you might bid a contract in '26, or... So we can, we can bid both of the contracts this spring, open bids for both of those. We could delay one and open it in 2026, or winter of '25, fall of '25, winter of '26. The other thing we can do is if, if you decide you want to have the bonds in hand, or the mon, all the money in hand before you sign contracts, still like to open bids as soon as we can this winter-spring, because that's when we get the best pricing. But we put a bid hold period on the contract. So we are basically telling the contractor, it's going to be 120 days before we have our bonding in pla, and our money in place to give you the notice to proceed to start. So he knows that going in, and may, may adjust his bid, he may not. But at least he knows upfront, you've got a three-month, a four-month wait before you're going to be authorized to start work. And a lot of times, that's so that you can get the bonding and the financing taken care of and in place. So we could still do the bid opening for both contracts, but have a bid hold period after that, so that we can get, we've got the good, hard numbers from the contractor, we get the bonds going, get the sale done, get everything in place, and then we have money in hand to sign that contract like Andy's talking about. Or we could split it up. We could bid one now and one-
Okay, so I think we probably need to, Doug and I, do some more analysis with the engineers and with Andy, and kind of strategizing whether we're doing this concurrently or separately.
Yeah, so just to review, review that, you're essentially, you're going to have, you're going to have risks, you're trying to mitigate risk, and you just have to be comfortable as both townships coming together. Both, you have to be comfortable with like taking on, what, what risk are you taking on? So as Brian talked about, I mean, you could say, hey, we're not comfortable taking on any risk. We don't want to take on construction risk, we don't want to take on market risk. That would mean sell the bonds and close the bonds in April or May of '25 and just have the money. And you don't sit on it, you would invest the, the proceeds in investments that are like eligible for PA 20, and you just have the money in hand. Or you could say, we're okay with delaying the bonds until 2026, and we're okay with having that market risk, or interest rates, you're not, your market and interest rates are going to fluctuate until you sell. And we'd rather do that process because we want to tighten up the costs. So we want to make sure that we don't, that we know exactly the amount that we want to issue in 2026 in the second season of construction. I will say, this is obviously, I'm going to step on their toes, but I would, I would strongly talk through whether or not you delay the bidding, though, because, feel free to come in and push me out of the way if you want. But I don't know if it would be advisable to delay bids a year when you know, like, that you want to do the project. I would just kind of really talk about that. From a financial advisor standpoint, that would be very uncommon. Typically, you would bid the project together, and then you could make decisions if you want to rebid or something, a contract. But it would be very rare, from my standpoint, and doing these projects a lot, that you would just say, don't bid one part of the project this year and wait till next year. Typically, the, you would bid it and then rebid it- rebid it if you don't like the price, but that's...
I agree with what he's saying.
Okay.
But this is, this, this decision does not need to be made tonight, but I did want to kind of bring that up. When we're talking about two construction seasons, do we borrow now? Do we borrow in '26? We'll have probably a discussion with the working group and kind of talk through this in terms of what is, what are the pros of '25 bonding and what are the pros of '26 bonding? And then we eventually, we'll leave it up to the boards to make the decision together of saying, this is what we're going to do with the timing. So with...
Yep. But I mean, that discussion and that decision, I think we would want reflected in that financing agreement that I'm talking about, because we want both townships to be comfortable and on the same page with the plan.
Yep.
So it's, the conversation sooner is...
So, and so just for both boards, so they know, we've clearly been working with Wade Trim and Gosling Zubek on the technical engineering side of this. It's just been in the past 12 weeks that we've been talking with and engaging with, with Benzinski and Company and with Micah Myers. So we have a lot of those details to go through too. But we are set up for, as you said, when we met with, you know, Tracy, and we're set up for a successful project. It's just hammering through some of those details.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. This is not like that we're trying to figure out the core of everything. This is like getting down into the final details of the financing that we're talking about. So Brittany is going to send, we're going to actually have two handouts that we're going to talk through and I hope, I don't want to take too much of your time. But I just, these handouts will hopefully give both township boards a view of what we're looking at. And if you have any questions, I mean, feel free tonight, but also feel free to follow up with us. So I'm not going to go through too much of this, but I do, this is a brochure that we always hand out in terms of open, it's called open market bonding. This is just to give you an idea of like what we're going to be doing when. So it kind of goes through like what the steps are to issue the bonds, like who does what, what, like the timing of it. It just gives you a preliminary view because some, sometimes we get really technical in all the details and kind of blow past all the other stuff that we, that will eventually happen with the bonding process. But the main thing to know here is that both township boards, you are not responsible for keeping this on track. That's what like Mark and I and the bonding process and your engineers and the engineering side, we're responsible to tell you like when the board has to take action on what and keeping this on track to make sure we fit the bonding into your preferred timing for money in the bank. So that's the first one. Then I do want to talk about the actual numbers so that you guys can see the estimates here. So these are going to be a little bit light because as I talked about, like these numbers are based on a $6 million borrowing, so that may change slightly. But I, this will give you an estimate on very preliminary view. And this is something like it, and I do want to ask a question to make sure that we got this right. But I believe that East Bay Township is responsible for 52% and Acme is 48?
That's approximately correct.
Okay, so we'll obviously, again, we'll refine the final details of that. If it's 47.64 or whatever, that will be in the contract. But this shows 52% East Bay, 48% Acme for very rough estimates. And again, right now, this shows a $6 million borrowing in total. That number will be refined as you get through, like we got to talk, the fourth point is the bond costs that are listed on here. And then we got to obviously get to the bids because this is still on estimate on the total cost. But this will give you kind of a glimpse into what the estimated bond payments could be for each township based on a 20-year, 25-year, or 30-year repayment. The townships do not have to pick the same repayment. So the repayment option is your township picking that yourself. So if Acme says, we want to pay this off in 20 years, and East Bay says 25 years, it's all sold as one bond, but the repayment schedule for Acme will be 20, the repayment schedule for East Bay will be 25. You're going to have separate payment schedules anyways. So the repayment term, if we bond in '25, we would need to know by February of 2025 what the term would be for each township. And again, that's made, that's, you make that decision yourself at any township board or whatever you want to do, board meeting or whatever you want to do there. If we bond in '26, then it just gets a later year. So for instance, February '26. So February of whatever year we bond for is the estimated time we would need to know your repayment term choice. And you can see in orange and yellow, kind of the pros and cons of each one. So obviously, it's, this is very similar to a mortgage payment. We can structure it if you want to, I will say. Like typically, debt is going to be leveled debt for, so each, like Acme's payment schedule will be a leveled debt payment, principal plus interest level payments. East Bay's will be the same. But it can be structured. I don't want to get too technical and waste a bunch of time, of your time tonight. But if you say you want a 25-year repayment, but we need to be careful about the first couple of years because our budget is pretty tight for the next two years, we need to structure around the first two years, that's perfectly possible. Essentially, east, east, each township needs to be, just tell us, and we're happy to have this discussion with you, but just tell us like what budget you can afford and if you need to structure around current debt or if you, whatever. You can pick pretty much whatever you want within certain constraints that, you can't do balloon payments. We can't just say no payment until 20 years from now. But within reason, if you have a budgetary issue or something we need to structure around, that's perfectly fine. As Mark talked about, the last thing I believe that I'm going to throw at you tonight is that the decision for bonding is set. Once you sell the bonds, you cannot prepay the bonds for the first 10 years. So no matter the term, 20, 25, or 30, there will be a 10-year call period where you cannot pay, pay down the debt more than just the regular payments. From year 11 on, on any of the terms, it is up to each township to make that call themselves. So if, again, East Bay will have the debt, they'll be the issuer. But in year 15, if Acme says, hey, we're sitting on a bunch of cash and we want to pay down our portion of the debt, you would work with East Bay and us and the trustee, as it's called, to pay down your portion of the debt and pay it off. So that is at each township's option from year 10 on. We'll have a lot more to come, but please reach out with any financial questions or anything throughout this process, anything you want to talk about in terms of the budget or the payments, interest rates, whatever. But any questions tonight?
Any questions? Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, I'd actually like to back up the bus a little bit and just verify something. Back to the discussion we had on bidding, on when you bid versus bidding year one or waiting to bid two. I noticed you asked Wade Trim. I just want to make sure Gosling Zubek tied into that also. Do you agree with... Okay, good. Just want to make sure of that. We have two engineers here. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Amy?
I do, but it's kind of a general, so I'm not really sure if it's going to be our engineer or you.
That's okay. They'll pop up and answer.
Because I haven't been in on that. So in our agreement, which was done in 2013, East Bay's had tremendous growth, more so than Acme. And I'm looking at the 48-52 flow. How was that calculated?
The last numbers that I had were from John DeVozzo on actual flow.
Yeah.
That's actual floor, actual meter readings. So we, in that pipe, Acme's sending 48% is us and 52 is, is, and that's where you feed all?
But we don't have everybody on the...
When was that taken?
2013.
We don't either.
2013.
But I mean, you're, isn't the resort on your, so that's...
Well, that's 10 years, that data's 10 years old, correct?
Right.
What data?
When was that determined?
No, no, no. John DeVozzo's, no, 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 that's fine. John DeVozzo's information was within the past year, I think, year...
Okay.
I was going to say, when was it, Mark?
That's fine.
Do you remember?
Well, let's say about eight months ago, maybe? I would say it was this year.
Okay, so it's 48?
It doesn't...
Yeah.
But those motels haven't come online.
And we can, and we can have...
That's a big issue.
Well, but it, but it's a line in the sand. I'm not saying that. It's a line in the sand. I understand.
Mark, did you have something to add on that?
Completely understand it all.
Yeah, so I guess two comments would be, one, the 2013 agreement.
Yep.
図画1, 2, and 5 kind of address that methodology for how it's determined. And I think, Beth, wasn't there an email about 20, earlier this year?
Yep, from John DeVozzo with the amounts.
Right.
Yeah.
50 by 40?
Oh.
About, so you guys, you know, it's...
[laughing].
Formulas in the agreement and, and the methodology for updating that. And then, you know, my read of that agreement talks about when you have a capital improvement project, that's necessary for both townships, that it's a, it's a static number, meaning that you look at what that allocation, that percentage allocation is in that year or the most recent one, and that's what you would use for allocation of the debt service between the parties.
So it's better for Acme to wait because of the hotels coming online, but...
Yeah, and the condominiums and everything else.
But it's not that we're not. We've got housing and everything else coming online too. I'm just trying to make sure when I under, you know, when I'm thinking about the growth you guys have had, I want to make sure we're being fair for Acme. I mean, you guys have been working with East Bay.
Yeah. So one of the things that I think that you'll appreciate is as we get down to the details, we have, you know, we obviously have engineers for, for both sides who are taking a look at this. And we have the DPW that works for both of us. And we're really fortunate with both our boards that we've got two supervisors who work very well together and are always looking out for what's fair and in the best interest of each other and themselves as well. So, I mean, I realize that doesn't, those are words and, but that's why we have, we, that's why we have Mark too, so.
Right. And that's why I'm just trying to understand where the numbers are coming.
Yep.
And I have read through this, but it was just like, okay, that's in my own, I'm not an engineer.
So in that line, what I want to make sure of is 2026 is when this ultimately is going to come online, correct?
Oh.
This system.
Well, we'll see what the bids and the construction schedule look like.
So that whole percentage could be completely different in 2026. Do we readdress it?
No.
We don't. We're sticking with the 52-40.
It's a line in the sand, wherever we are at a certain point, I'm going to say, Dale, because we take out the bond. And once that bond's taken out, it's...
It's based on that term.
It's, it's, that's where the line's at. I mean, if you want to go 20, 10 years down the line, say, well, East Bay has grown exponentially and they're doing, I'm throwing out numbers, 75 and we're doing 25.
It gets remeasured?
No.
No.
No, I mean, my, if I may, my read of the 2013 agreement is that the intent is that it's a static, you know, that we would establish it based on the mechanism that's in the 2013 agreement for that year in which our, this financing agreement would be entered into. So let's just say the financing agreement is entered into in February of 2025. We're going to use that data probably from 2024. I say probably just because I don't remember the language off the top of my head. But that would make sense.
It was the same thing for the CIPP up on 31, that we picked a time when we were doing the project. I was like, okay, what is the breakout of that? Now, it was another year then until some of the payments happened, but we still used that breakout from that point in time.
I just have a general question.
Sure.
So East Bay is basically the one that's taking out the bond for both entities. And we each get to pick our own term. Is each township paying the...
The bond cost?
...holder individually, or is Acme paying East Bay? How, how does that work? And Tracy may know that, but she's not here to answer that.
My concept would be that Acme, if, if East Bay issues the bond, that Acme would be paying East Bay so that East Bay would make one payment.
Okay. And that's what I wondered, but if we chose the 20-year repayment and they chose the 30-year, then 10 years after we're done paying ourselves, we're still collecting from Acme to pay that portion?
Yep.
Or we've called the bond in and we've paid the balance or whatever the case might be?
Yes, that, that could happen. So we could talk to the trustee, who is essentially the invoicer, about other options if one of the entities is no longer involved. Like if East Bay's no longer involved because Acme went longer in the repayment, we could talk to the trustee. But typically, the Acme would pay East Bay and East Bay would forward the payment to the trustee.
I just wanted to make sure I had a good understanding of that.
Is there any reason that we couldn't agree to the same payment?
It's, all of that's going to be...
Right, we would set it. It needs to be in that financing agreement.
I understand, but the bonder, you're saying it doesn't have to be. You're saying it's going to be in agreement. You're, you know what I mean? I'm saying, I think in the cooperation, we should maybe pick the same date. It might be beneficial to both jurisdictions to pick if it's going to be 20 or 25 or whatever that is.
I'm just looking at the interest rate and the less time is...
Yeah.
Well, I, I think what probably might work the best is as we're, one thing, remember, this is, this is a process that you go through with a project this big. So not every detail's going to be known like right now. And as I mentioned, we're just, we're now collectively bringing in the bond council and piece of, and the financing piece of this, having gotten some good work done on, you know, a basis of the funding. So with that, we'll be hammering those details out and let's see where we end up, where when Acme Township looks at their finances and says, this would be the best schedule for us, East Bay does the same. And then let's see if we're somewhere near similar terms or if we're somewhat differently. And then we can decide how to handle it at that point and what our options are.
I'll do that.
Okay. Other questions? I will mention too, that as I said, Andy had recommended Mark, who we knew. At the same time, when talking with Andy, who I met at a supervisors' meeting and was talking about this project with them, and then we had further conversations, he's worked quite a bit with Brian Souza and they have worked on projects before. So it was a nice kind of familiarity with a lot of these, and Mark as well.
And Mark Earl.
And Gosling and Mindy. It's just a very, we always find, right, in Grand Chivers County, it's a pretty small world, right? Or Northern Michigan, rather.
I recommend it.
Good, yes. Mindy?
You said, assuming we get a bid.
Yes.
How often does that not happen?
I've never had it happen, but I, I don't want you to be my first either, but I, I'm not taking it for granted. I mean, but we've never had it happen. Typically, on this type of bond sale, you get anywhere from five to 10 bids.
Okay.
For the amount that you're selling and like your credit, your credit will be very good. You're selling a decent sized bond issue. It would take a market issue most likely to not get a bid.
Okay, I just...
I don't know if you can tell from talking with Andy, I learned something very quick about him. He gives you absolutely every option that could possibly ever happen, even if it's slim. He wants you to know what that, that exposure is.
He said that and I wrote it down, so it, it hit me.
So it's on the record. If it happens, you, yeah, we'll check your notes.
Well, very good. Any other questions for engineers, attorneys, or financial advisors? Matt?
I'm back to my, my engineering question. So let me, let me give another go with this. So this, this scenario that, that, you know, I was, I was asking about with this, I guess we're calling the phase two of the course management, talking about the redundant piping. I was kind of looking at the numbers in, in your cost buildup. How, how do we have, and just so I understand this, the directional bore is estimated $400 a lineal foot and the open cut is 375? So is it, is it cheaper to open cut than it is directional bore?
That would be a function of what you have to restore after you open cut. So directional drilling... So directional drilling is less above the surface.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
And then the, so i- in general, per foot, directional drilling of the pipe costs more, but it's all the things that go around the trenching of the pipe in that increase the cost.
I think what you're saying is, I think you're paying them in there for restoration when you do open cut, that you don't see when you do-
Well, you've got a restoration line, is that what that is?
Yeah, but there's, there's, I don't, I don't remember the-
Yeah. And I know we're comparing sort of, uh, apples here, we get two different conditions of what restoration would involve, but-
Yeah, right, so, you've got pavement marking restoration, you've got, uh-
Ass fall.
Uh, utility relocations, um, there's some other stuff in here that I'm not seeing right now that, that is associated, that you have to tack on to an open cut cost. The open cut is just to dig down, put that pipe in, some manholes maybe, um, but then there are other pay items that are restoring all that surface that are paid for separately in that list that you're not seeing in that 375 per foot for open cut, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so, I mean, I get it, you're, you're, you're paying a premium and maybe there's some, some other cost savings. The, the project y'all talked about in, uh, for that relining of the section in 2019-
2020.
2020, what, what was, uh, what was the cost, you said 1.2-
1.2 million.
1.2 million, what was the length of that?
A mile?
Come on. Okay. A mile for a million, so, um-
Pre-COVID.
You know, bear, bear with where I'm going here, yeah, yeah, obviously pre-COVID. So, back to this phase two and this idea around, uh, you know, I guess I'm, I'm sort of pushing maybe for, for some additional analysis around this redundant, uh, pipe in the, at least in the open, um, open cut section. You know, if, if all these other costs are the same, or virtually all of them are associated with, um, uh, the, you know, some, some of these other line items around road inspection, that's not gonna change, um, you know, restoration's not gonna change, you've already got the trench open, and we get down to, you know, we're calling it $375, um, dollars a lineal foot, and we've got right at a mile worth of piping associated with this portion of the project, is it safe to assume, and that, and that aggregate total is 1.8 million dollars, is it safe to assume that, uh, half of that, half of that would be associated with an additional pipe in the ground, maybe, um, at Rosley?
Yeah.
Less than a million dollars?
What I think, Matt, instead of having them answer questions on the fly with that, what we'll do is, um, as they've, we'll look back on all of these questions, look back and see if there's any further items that they need to look back and take a look at and validate, do we continue to proceed with the way we're thinking, or is there any opportunities to make any adjustments for that? And part of that would be, um, the engineering changes for that, um, and the associated costs with that. If they continue down, if it, if it makes sense, then obviously they will, you know, let the township know and we'll let the boards know. If it validates their, the current recommendation, um, we can as well let, let that be known too.
No, I, I won't go into any more detail, I guess, I just, where, where I'm going with this is if-
No, it's a good question.
If the intent is to go this route and invest into, uh, you know, rehabbing the, the existing forced main, I guess it's just, you know, my mind, my, my preference would be to go with the new pipe if the costs are, are the same or potentially less.
Mm-hmm. Nope, it's a good question, as Brian mentioned earlier, and like I said, they've done a considerable amount of analysis on that and kind of reached the conclusions they've come to, but it's always a good thing to take a look back and see if there are any missed opportunities. So, did you have a question?
Just a question with Matt, as he's talking on that, if you put in that redundant pipe, what's it gonna take to get over to the pipe that's there to hook onto it? That would be an added cost, and is that conceivably good to do or not?
So, two parallel pipes running in the same trench? Are we-
I'm saying to go hook onto the pipe that's already in, in the ground, which is what he's talking about.
Yeah, you would, you would have to set up the project and the termination at the wastewater treatment plant for both pipes to function kind of independently, really.
Yeah, I think, I think where, where he's asking is, uh, what we had talked about, maybe a little bit, our beat around it a little bit, is the additional cost to get from the, the 2B route to the, to the whole pipe.
Right, right, so where we divert, when we say we were doing contract one, and then we had three different options for contract two, um, right there, that existing pipe, where we divert on contract two versus going, following the same path that contract one did, we could make that connection right there, because if we start at that point and had two west-
It's not like moving over-
We put in two pipes-
Very far.
We gotta get across the intersection, but that existing pipe is in that-
Okay.
Is that reasonably close, so we don't have to go a long distance with new pipe just to connect the two of them. I think, I, I think that was your question.
And we'll, we'll have them, um, and work amongst themselves with Wade Trim and also involve Gosling Zubek in addressing that in the, in a short timeframe, um, in coming up here. Other questions? Yes, Aaron? Sure.
Does anyone have any of the numbers to help my, my, around the 48.52% of people within our townships on sewage, septic, as compared to those that are on the sewer system?
I don't have our sewer, our septic numbers versus our sewer numbers, we have a growth boundary, and even within our growth boundary, we still do have people on septic. Not everybody is on sewer, um, I think you alluded to that earlier, Sue, um, but any new developments, any developments, I think it's like five or more, uh, dwellings or parcels have to be connected if they're within the growth boundary. So, um, you've heard about Live AE, um, that's going in on Four Mile Road, that's about 170 houses, um, they'll be, they'll have to connect, obviously, um, but then you'll hear other subdivisions like, gosh, I think it was called Lavender Hills, I forget, some of the names sometimes come and go until they're in place.
There's a name that's in the pipeline?
Yeah, um, but that one's out on Potter Road, and so that won't be connected to, to a municipal system, yeah. But we can certainly get the number of customers, um, the DPW has the number of customers that are on the, the sewer system, wastewater system, for each of the townships, for sure.
The thing is, is, sorry, is, it's gonna be a little misleading in that sense, because customers, a hotel is a customer, their flow is huge, housing is different, do you-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So we, I mean, we would have that information in our assessing system, where we're showing who's on sewer and who's on water, we could tell you who has houses on a piece of property that's not in our sewer, so they have septic, um-
But they're broken down by units also, aren't they?
Not in the assessing, that would be DPW, yes, different than customers, so you would just have to-
It's just a-
I mean, and I don't, yeah, so-
Want to be size of pipe too.
Well, then-
Yeah.
That's your answer.
Okay.
Why would they do that?
Other, other ques, so that didn't quite give you your answer, but it gave you some background information. Other questions? With that, we will move to public comment, any public comment, everybody's been free to ask questions and speak, but welcome too. Okay, um, we have upcoming meeting dates, we just have our regular meeting in December, so we'll see our board then. Anything closing for your board, or you're good?
Uh, has anybody got? Dale?
Okay, well-
We're doing good, Dale's on, well, he didn't want us to get microphoned.
We're not going to.
You know, Dale, I didn't put the nameplates there, but I might have chosen the same one, I don't, the same location.
Yeah, talk to Lisa about that.
Okay, if there is no objection from either board, then we stand adjourned, and thank you very much to both engineering firms, to Benzinski and to Micah Myers, very much appreciated, appreciate it.